Recording has started.
Good evening, everybody. I'll go ahead and call to order the planning commission for Sacramento County on January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Lydia, do you want to go ahead and call the roll?
Absolutely. And members Borha.
Present, Happy New Year.
Thank you, Happy New Year. Martensen?
Here.
Raythal?
Here.
Member Tatisi?
Here.
And lastly, member Wong?
Here.
And we do have a quorum.
Thank you. Do you want to go ahead and read the statement this evening?
Yes, this meeting is live streamed and temporarily closed to in-person public participation. The clerk's office is in the process of hosting every public meetings that will provide board members and members of the public with the option to participate in the meeting either in person or remotely. We thank you for your patience and support. To make a verbal comment at today's meeting, dial nine one six eight seven five two five hundred. Follow the prompts to be placed in queue for specific agenda item or off agenda matter. When the chair opens public comment for a specific agenda item or off agenda matter, callers will be transferred from the queue into the meeting to make a verbal comment. Written comments are always accepted. Please feel free to send your email comment to boardclerk@set county dot net and your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record.
Perfect. And with the announcement, recent announcements that we are going to stay online for a while, I do have a request. To make this seem a little bit closer to a real live public meeting, I would request that the commissioners and staff as much as possible keep their cameras on during the meeting. Especially if you're presenting, it really just helps us feel like we can hear you and see you and communicate a little better because we can see your facial expression. So definitely don't have to, you know, if you got a reason not to keep your camera off, totally fine. But it's just my request tonight so we can all feel a little bit closer to normal. I'll go ahead and kick us off with the pledge of allegiance now. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, with that, we're going to go ahead and move on to item number one. Will you call item number one, please?
Thank you, Chair Raythal. Item number one is a general plan amendment. The project is West of Watt Urban Development Area Designation Amendment, and the environmental doc is a notice of exemption.
Thank you, Lydia, and good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Young Choi with Planning and Environmental Review. Next slide, please, Lydia. This request is for a general plan amendment to modify the text of the land use element regarding the urban development area. Allow applications for certain small projects without a master plan. Within the land use element, we have two areas that we are amending. The first is the page nine of the land use element, which defines urban development area. So within the definition, we are adding the wording unless the property is adjacent to similar intensity of urban development is already included in water and sewer district service areas. And next slide, please, Lydia. The second area is the page one thirty-five of the land use element. Here, it's about the zoning consistency matrix footprint. So here, just like the same as the page nine, we are adding the language unless the property is adjacent to similar intensity of urban development and it's already included in water and sewer district areas. Next slide. To give you a background of this, this general plan amendment, so Board of Supervisors passed a resolution two thousand and twenty-one zero one four one. So that was the annual plan, annual progress, annual update for the general plan, so which initiated the general plan amendment to allow an alternative path for certain locations where services exist so that a rezone could be considered without a master plan. So this proposed amendment recognizes the intent of the UDA designation to avoid the piecemeal development by only allowing properties that are adjacent to similar intensity of urban development and with already existing water and sewer service. With this amendment, it does not allow for any construction or development. It just allows for a pathway for applications for a rezone. To give perspective a little bit, within the UDA designation, two hundred and eighty properties total. However, only twenty-four properties are within the water and sewer service. And of those, only two properties are currently vacant. So with that, next slide. Staff recommendation is that the commissioners recommend that the Board of Supervisors recognize the exempt status of the CEQA and that the planning commission adopt the resolution recommending that the Board of Supervisors amend the Sacramento County General Plan subject to the findings listed in the staff report. And staff is here to answer any questions your commissioners may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Young. I appreciate your presentation. Commissioners, any questions for staff this evening? All right, hearing none. Do we need to go ahead and open public comment on this recommendation?
And at this time, there are no public comments.
Perfect. Perfect. Well, we are opened and now closed for public comment. Commissioners? Any deliberation or motion?
I move to move the staff recommendation and adopt as noted.
And that's perfect.
One second, this is Cara.
Thanks, Cara. Thanks, Mr. Martensen. And any deliberation before I call for a vote? All right, Lydia, will you go ahead and call the roll, please?
Absolutely. And Commissioners Borha? Martensen?
Yes.
Raythal?
Yes.
Tatisi?
Yes.
And Wong?
Yes.
And motion carries for staff recommendation.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to item number two.
Item number two is a general plan amendment. And the let's see, environmental doc is a negative declaration.
All right, Leanne, whenever you're ready. Leanne, you may be unmuted. We can't hear you.
Hi, Leanne, I've unmuted you.
And this is Leanne Moffett. Tonight, Todd Smith is going to be giving the staff presentation.
Sorry about that. Todd, take it away. I'm going to be ready.
Todd may be having audio problems here.
I believe he may be because his mic is unmuted. So Todd, if you can hear us, you may need to. There we go. Thank you.
Okay, sorry for that, folks. I am gonna do this presentation tonight for Leanne Mueller. So now that I got my settings all dialed in. Next slide, please. For the commissioners' background, this is a revision to the two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-nine housing element, which is actually a general plan amendment that would amend the current housing elements in the general plan. And we are incorporating additional changes as required for certification of this housing element by the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD. And next slide, please. So for those who haven't done this before, the housing element is the county's plan for meeting its fair share of the regional housing need. It covers the planning period of two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-nine. It is a mandatory or required element of the general plan and ultimately will be certified by HCD. Next slide, please. So a little bit of background, the planning commission did hear this request for the housing element to amend the general plan in June, two thousand and twenty-one, and the planning commission at that time recommended approval to the Board of Supervisors. The board approved that general plan amendment for this housing element in July, two thousand and twenty-one. And subsequently, we submitted the adopted housing element to HCD for their review and certification. Next slide, please. Following that, actually during that time period, staff conducted a couple of rounds of review with HCD. The first time we had a discussion with HCD, we got a formal review letter dated April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Had another meeting with staff and HCD at the end of May, and during both of those reviewed rounds, we made revisions to the two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-nine housing element based on comments from HCD staff as well as legal services in Northern California and the Sacramento Housing Alliance. Then we moved forward in the timeline after the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors approved the housing element update. We submitted to HCD then October twenty-eighth, twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-one. We received a letter from HCD that required additional changes prior to certification. And so the changes that are before this commission tonight are based on that letter from October from HCD and then a subsequent meeting with HCD staff December sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. Next slide, please. And so the way we've laid out this presentation is very fairly straightforward. Just want to briefly cover the goals of the housing element. They are to provide an adequate supply of land for housing, to reduce constraints around housing production, to preserve existing housing and neighborhoods, improve housing opportunities and conditions for special needs group, groups, providing and maintaining housing affordability, promoting the efficient use of energy in residences through alternative and innovative conservation measures, and then finally promoting and affirmatively furthering fair housing opportunities for Sacramento County residents. Next slide, please. So that last number seven category that I mentioned, the assessment of fair housing is, comes out of AB six eighty-six. That requires that all public agencies administer programs and activities related to housing and community development in a manner that affirmatively furthers fair housing and to not take any action that's materially inconsistent with this obligation. AB six eighty-six also requires local governments to include an assessment of fair housing within their housing element. Next slide. So now to the meat. HCD's comment letter addresses five areas that staff felt needed additional clarification or information. And these five are on the slide. So affirmatively furthering fair housing related to the sites inventory, certain constraints, quantified objectives, and program modifications. Next slide. So first, in the affirmatively furthering fair housing section, we have made changes to the element under the bolded headings on this slide. So concentrated areas of affluence, we added text to chapter eleven of the element, and I do want to clarify that only one area is referenced on this slide. However, the element does identify few other neighborhoods, generally in the Arden Arcade area and a portion of Carmichael. As it relates to access to opportunity, we have added analysis regarding access to transportation in various parts of the county. The sites inventory and its program A one has been modified to reflect that twenty percent of the highest and high resource areas would be prioritized for locating affordable housing. And we've also added discussion of land inside the urban policy area as it relates to the sites inventory. This is an important point because we have a requirement to identify land that has access to infrastructure, and so that would typically be within the urban policy area. Related to local data and knowledge, we have added text about historic redlining activities, racially restrictive covenants in different parts of the county, as well as analysis of impediments. The goals and actions under this section, we have added table seventy, which does have some countywide policies and objectives. And we've added some quantification around those. Next slide. So the sites inventory was the next major category. Under the default density heading, we've got additional text and table C twenty-five. Those include amendments to specify some pending projects for affordable housing, so these may have been entitled previously, but they may not have building permits yet, but we're just adding some clarification there. A large site, this is program A eight, has been modified as suggested by HCD, and we've also clarified through text and table twenty-seven, C twenty-seven, to clarify that most of those large sites are within existing approved master plan areas. As it relates to zoning for a variety of housing types, the text on page one hundred has been modified to clarify design review is non-discretionary. And then finally, program E nine related to accessory dwelling units has been modified to demonstrate the county's commitment to ongoing compliance with state laws related to ADUs. Next slide. So in the constraints category, specifically, there was a comment related to constraints on housing for persons with disabilities. The county has committed through these modifications in the housing element to remove removing the definition of a single household and adding a definition of family that is compliant with state law. Next slide, please. The quantified objectives, we have added or established quantified objectives for housing units that can be constructed, rehabilitated, and conserved. So there's a table toward the beginning of the element, table five, that's been modified that to add units that can be rehabilitated and conserved over a five-year timeframe. Next slide, please. Program modification, so assisting in development, we've got a program B one that indicates we will continue to meet with developers, and we've added some quantified objectives to other programs as suggested by HCD. And then programs D one through D eight also address that comment. Program D eight, as a specific example, is related to emergency shelters. It's been amended to add the requirements and actions that will be taken to ensure that the county's requirements are consistent with state law. For example, in the zoning code, we're removing a separation provision that currently is not consistent with state law. Next slide, please. So the previous findings, actually before I get there, the adoption of the two thousand and twenty-one to twenty-nine housing element will meet the requirements of the California Government Code six five five eight three, which requires that a local government's general plan include a housing element that addresses the preservation, improvement, and development of housing. The two thousand and twenty-one to twenty-nine housing element is consistent with the other elements of the general plan. And the countywide rezone program, which is a program of the housing element, will accommodate the county's remaining lower-income regional housing needs allocation of two thousand eight hundred and thirty-four units. That work is already underway. Next slide, please. So staff's recommended action is that the planning commission recommended to the Board of Supervisors to amend the housing element of the Sacramento County General Plan by incorporating these additional changes as required for certification by HCD, and that the board recognized the previously adopted negative declaration as adequate and complete. Next slide. That concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions, and Leanne Moffett and Leanne Mueller are as well.
Thank you, Todd. Appreciate your presentation. Commissioners, any questions for staff this evening?
This is Cara, just a quick kind of process question. Some, maybe not all of these comments by HCD. I think I'd classify as kind of cleanup. I know we have to adopt the housing element by a certain time, certain date. Is this just not being able to sync up with HCD within that timeframe? Is this kind of typical that we get comments after the fact and then have to update the element, or was there kind of a specific reason for the after-the-fact commentary by HCD?
So this is Leanne Moffett. I can take that one. It is not typical, in my experience, having worked on several housing elements. We typically have gotten certification the first go-around. I think there are a lot of new laws, particularly in the affirmatively furthering fair housing arena, and you recall, that's a new chapter for us. There was a lot of just trying to figure out what was expected there. And I think just in general, the requirements and the analysis that's being done by HCD is a lot higher. I think we're not alone in getting a comment letter, but it isn't typical, no. So we did adopt it on time, but we are trying to get this through the hearing process fairly quickly because we want to make sure that if there were to be any grant submittals out there that require a compliant housing element, we wouldn't have a problem with getting grant funds or other items as a result. So we are trying to get to the board fairly quickly, and then I'll see if Leanne Mueller thinks that there's anything else to add that I haven't said already.
I would just reiterate what Leanne said in that we did adopt, the county adopted the housing element within the timeframe. So as far as that date, which had to be by September, we did actually do that. So we're fine on that standpoint. It's just now we're working towards certification of it. And I would agree with you that they seem like a lot of cleanup items, or a lot of it was focused on the affirmatively furthering fair housing chapter, and in my opinion, a lot of that came into effect because we had initially submitted our housing element for review at before they had come out with their guidance document on how to comply with the affirmatively furthering fair housing requirements. So I think some of it, we got caught up in a review cycle where I think they hadn't necessarily entirely decided what they wanted, and it was evolving as we were adopting our element.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Other commissioners, questions for staff? All right, hearing none at this time. We'll go ahead and move on to public comment.
And there are, there are no public comments at this time.
All right. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period, and we'll move on for Commissioner deliberation.
I'm happy to move staff recommendation. This is Cara.
This is Commissioner Tatisi. I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further comments before I call for a vote?
Hi, this is Commissioner Borha. Thank you for the staff when working so hard on this. I just want to kind of reiterate the importance of us kind of looking at this regionally, too. I know two days ago, HCD did not approve the City of Davis's housing element, and the city now must comply, and I'm glad that our staff are working very hard and diligently and getting these compliance. But a lot of it really has to do with making sure that the regional housing needs assessment that SECOG, our MPO, was putting together matches with all of the jurisdictions that we're all kind of moving towards the same goal. And so I do hope that the staff does recognize that, and when SECOG does reconsider the arena in future cycles, because housing is still a critical need for the region, that hopefully we would do so in concert with this housing element that our county has produced, so that you know, we hit two targets, but also know that we're not just kind of carrying the burden on the six-county mega region, especially if we, as the county of Sacramento, already have needs to meet our own demands. So that's just my two cents, but happy to support this moving forward. Thank you.
All right, any other comments? All right, Lydia, will you go ahead and call the roll, please?
Absolutely. And Commissioners Borha? Commissioner Borha? Take a look at his. There we go. Commissioner Borha? We're taking the vote. We'll come back to Commissioner Borha. Martensen?
Yes.
Raythal?
Yes.
Commissioner Tatisi?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
And again, Commissioner Borha, let me, there we go.
I'm here. Yes, yes. I voted in favor. Sorry about that. I got cut off.
No, no worries. Thank you. And the motion passes.
Thank you so much. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to item number three.
And item number three is for a special development permit and design review located at five six three seven Dudley Boulevard on the northwest corner of the intersection of James Way and Dudley Way in the McClellan Park Special Planning Area in the North Highlands community. And the environmental doc is environmental coordinators Miranda and prior final supplemental environmental impact report, addendum to the supplemental environmental impact report and mitigation monitoring and reporting program.
Thank you, Lydia. Good evening, everyone. This is Meredith Holesworth. I'm the project manager for the McClellan Apartments project. I just want to confirm you can hear me.
You can.
Thank you, and I apologize. I just tried to turn my camera on, and my settings are saying I don't have permission, so I'll see if I can try to figure that out before my next item. I didn't try. And before I go into the presentation, I want to make sure we have someone from the applicant team who is able to speak. I think we have Brandon listed as one of the presenters. I just want to make sure. Presentation. Great, thank you, Brandon. Just wanted to make sure somebody would be able to speak if there were questions at the end. But with that, I'll go ahead and go through my presentation. If you can go to the next slide, please. So the project site is located on the northwest corner of James Way and Dudley Boulevard in the North Highlands community. The site is currently developed with six vacant multifamily residential apartment buildings, as you can see in the aerial on the slide. Next slide, please. The project site is zoned with the McClellan Park Special Planning Area, or SPA, and is surrounded on all four sides by SPA zoning. Next slide, please. The subject parcels were first developed with multifamily dwellings between nineteen fifty-three and sixty-eight, and then were redeveloped to their current configuration between sixty-eight and seventy-three. A prior entitlement was processed on the subject parcels for an SPA amendment under control number PLNP eighteen dash zero 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 six four. Next slide, please. The request before you this evening is for a special development permit for a density bonus or a reduction in the building setbacks, and then for the deviation to parking lot planters. There are details for all of these deviations requested shown on the slide and in the report materials. The request also includes a design review to be in substantial The request also includes a design review to be in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines. Next slide, please. This is the proposed site plan showing the proposed building layout. Buildings one through six are the existing buildings, while seven through 12 and the community building are the proposed buildings. The solar carports and site amenities such as the central courtyard and outdoor living spaces are shown on the site plan as well. Next slide, please. And this is the submitted landscape plan, just showing the proposed plantings on the site. Next slide, please. This is a site rendering of the project as proposed, just showing the overall site. It's going to fit into the community context with the central courtyard shown and then the proposed buildings. Next slide. The North Highlands CPAC met on August 31st of 2021 and recommends that the planning commission approve the requests entitlements. There were no members of the public in attendance at that meeting and no concerns raised by the CPAC. Then the DRAC met on August 31st of 2021 and recommends that the planning commission find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines. Next slide, please. So there are a total of 90 apartment units currently on the site. This project proposes an additional 138 units with the remodeling of the existing units for a total of 228 housing units. The project site is located in the Wary Office Park Subdistrict of the SPA, which is intended to support continued residential use and allow for future redevelopment of the area. And staff has found this project to be consistent with the general plan, community plan and SPA. Next slide. Staff is recommending approval of the following actions to recognize the addendum of the final supplemental EIR entitled McClellan Air Force Base Draft Final Reuse Plan and Draft Implementation Plan to find that that document is still adequate and appropriate for the proposed project to approve the special development. And it's subject to findings and conditions and to find the project in substantial compliance. I think I lost staff. This is Commissioner Martenson.
Yeah, I believe so too. This is Chris Puhuli, principal planner. I think she was wrapping up the presentation. The notation on this slide just contains staff recommendations. So perhaps we can conclude the staff presentation and move on to questions from questions from commissioners.
Sounds great. Thanks, Chris. Questions, commissioners? All right, hearing no questions for staff at this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public comment.
And there are no public comments at this time.
Need to allow the applicant to speak.
Oh, fair enough. Thank you so much.
Okay, perfect. We'd like to get the applicant sworn in. So if he or she is ready, if you wish to address the board, please prepare yourself to be sworn. Please raise your right hand and the appropriate response is I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Can you please make the statement, state your name and make the statement, I have been sworn?
My name is Jamie Corsaro Vaca with Mogabairo Architects and I have been sworn.
Thank you so much. Please proceed.
I don't believe we have anything to specifically address, but we are here in present if there were any questions.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant this evening? All right, thanks for being here. We have no questions at that time. We're going to go ahead and move on to public comment.
Are no public comments at this time?
No public comment. We'll go ahead and close public comment. We'll move on to Commissioner deliberation.
This is Cara. I don't really have many comments other than, you know, I think it's a really good reuse of the property and needed and welcome probably update in the design appreciated, the renderings provided by the applicant, excuse me. And I'm happy to support staff recommendation tonight.
I'll second that if that's a motion.
Second.
Okay, that was Commissioner Tatiishi, correct?
Correct.
Thank you so much.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any comments, commissioners, before I call for a vote?
I just want to make sure that Commissioner Martenson's comment was an actual motion.
Yes, it was a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. Since we do have the applicant on the line, could I ask you if you are in agreement with all the conditions of approval?
Yes, we are.
All right, thanks so much for confirming that for the record. Any other comments, commissioners, before we call for a vote? All right, hearing none, Lydia, can you please go ahead and call the roll?
Yes, Commissioners Borja?
Yes.
Martenson?
Yes.
Raythel?
Yes.
Tatiishi?
Yes.
And Wong?
Yes.
And motion passes.
Congratulations. Thanks for being here tonight. With that, we're going to move on to item number four.
And item number four is for a community plan amendment, rezone use permit, special development permit and design review located at 2245 Semo Circle, approximately 500 feet north of Coloma Road in the Cordova Community. And the environmental doc is exempt.
Good evening. I apologize, I did get kicked off there for a second, but I hope I'm back and I have my camera. Can you guys still hear me okay?
We can see you and hear you.
Great. Okay, hopefully my connection is a little better for this one. I guess the end of my presentation maybe didn't make it, so sorry about that. But let's go ahead with Semo Circle Mini Storage. I'm Meredith Holesworth again and I am also the project manager for this project. Next slide, please. So the project site is located at 2245 Semo Circle, approximately 500 feet north of Coloma Road in the Cordova Community. The site is currently developed with a vacant office building and the storage yard is currently being utilized behind the office building. Next slide, please. The project site is currently zoned MP and M2 and is surrounded on all sides by other industrial zones and uses and then an RD 25 project across the street or subject or project site across the street, across Semo Circle. Next slide, please. The request for this project is for a community plan amendment and a rezone from the existing MP and M2 community plan designations and zones to general commercial. And that's on the two parcels that are totaling 3.09 acres. So the total 3.09 acres would be zoned and designated general commercial. It includes a use permit to allow storage of operable boats and RVs. It would allow barbed wire fencing in the GC zone as well as for cargo containers to be utilized as storage units. The request also includes a special development permit. That would allow deviations to the required trash enclosure landscaping, to the tree spacing in the frontage landscape planter, to the parking stall configuration of the existing parking spaces and then to the total number of parking stalls. And again, the details of these requests and deviations are on the slide as well as the staff report. Lastly, the request includes a design review entitlement to comply with countywide design guidelines. Next slide, please. So here is the site plan. This is showing the existing building on site that would be used as an office and the designated spaces for the proposed boat and RV storage as well as the locations for the cargo containers. There would be two points of access from Semo Circle, one to the office and then one to the storage area. Next slide, please. Here is the landscape plan, just showing the proposed plantings along the frontage of the site. Next slide. These are the proposed building elevations of the renovated office building. Next slide. The Cordova CPAC met on October 15th of 2020 and recommends that the planning commission approve the requested entitlements. The design review advisory committee reviewed the project on October 8th of 2020 and they found the project to be in compliance with the design guidelines. Next slide, please. The applicant intends to develop the subject parcels with a mini storage facility that would utilize 111 onsite cargo containers as storage units and 98 spaces for outdoor storage for operable boats and RVs. The site was previously used as a Chevrolet parts store and storage yard. The existing building is currently vacant and would serve as the onsite office. And the cargo containers will be utilized as storage units that would not be permanently affixed to the ground. The project has been determined to be exempt from CEQA and staff has included a condition of approval stating that the use permit would expire 20 years from the date of approval just to reassess the transition, the transitionary nature of this, this current area and just to determine if the use would still make sense in the area. Next slide, please. So planning staff is recommending that the planning commission make the following recommendations to the board to recognize the exempt status of the request under CEQA, to approve the resolution authorizing an amendment to the Cordova Community Plan, to approve the ordinance to rezone the project site, to approve the use permit and the special development permit subject to findings and conditions of approval. And finally, to find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines subject to findings and conditions. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions and we do have the applicant available as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Meredith. Questions for staff this evening, commissioners?
Yeah, this is Cara. I just noticed that the CPAC reviewed this one back in 2020. I know obviously the state of affairs and COVID and everything has probably delayed things, projects for a variety of reasons, which is kind of curious. And maybe this is more of a follow-up question for staff to kind of how timely things are moving through the process and if we're seeing, or if this is kind of unique to this particular project as opposed to others.
Yeah, so this is Chris Puhuli, again, principal planner. I would say that there were some unique issues surrounding this particular project and some further discussion with the applicant team about the existing building and the parking configuration with that building that caused some delays with this project. As a general, general comment, I would say that projects are advancing through the, through the planning process rather quickly. We're not experiencing any real significant delays currently. I would say that we do have a fair amount of new staff and so, you know, things might take a little bit of time, but not a significant amount of delay on projects.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions for staff this evening? All right, hearing none, I'll go ahead and invite you to swear in the applicant this evening.
Okay, and applicant, if you wish to address the board, please prepare yourself to be sworn. Raise your right hand and the appropriate response is I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay, and if you would please state your name for the record and make the statement, I have been sworn.
Yes, good evening. My name is Nick Abdis. I'm with the Thomas Law Group. On behalf of the applicant, I have been sworn.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your time this evening. I'm joined by Chris Schultz, our project engineer from TSD Engineering, who's also on the line in the event there are questions. I think pretty straightforward request before you, certainly the, to your point, Commissioner Martenson on the timing, you know, we did encounter a few hurdles on this project as Mr. Puhuli mentioned, in addition to those, you know, certainly as it related to some inconsistencies between the county's stormwater quality design manual and the engineering manual. Some inconsistencies there probably caused us a significant delay. I would say several, several months just on that issue alone. So there were some unique attributes to this project and I hope some of those inconsistencies can be cleared up in the future so that projects sort of aren't hung up on that, on that issue. I know I have other projects as well in the county and that issue has arisen in other instances as well. But other than that, happy to answer any questions and thank you for your time again.
Thanks, Mr. Abdis. Questions for the applicant this evening? All right, thanks for being here. It doesn't look like we've got any questions for you this evening. Going to go ahead and move us on to public comment.
And there are no public comments?
All right, so with that, we're going to go ahead and close public comment and move on to Commissioner deliberation.
This is Commissioner Tatiishi. I'll move staff recommendations.
This is Commissioner Borja. I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any commissioners want to speak before I call for, call the roll? All right, hearing no further deliberation amongst commissioners, Lydia, will you go ahead and call the roll?
Yes, Commissioners Borja?
Aye.
Martenson?
Yes.
Raythel?
Yes.
Tatiishi?
Yes.
And Wong?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
All right, thanks for being here tonight. With that, that concludes item number four this evening. Move on to the planning director's report.
Again, this is Chris Puhuli, principal planner. I have a couple of updates and then Leanne Moffett, our planning director, has an announcement as well. The first item that I wanted to mention is that the last time we met, I had mentioned that the board was about to take action on zoning code and county code package related to Senate Bill 9, which is the bill related to urban lot split. bill related to urban lot splits and two homes on one parcel or duplexes on on one parcel as well. The board did introduce that package in mid-December, and they are scheduled to adopt that ordinance, that set package of ordinances tomorrow. So that will, that is on the board agenda. In addition to that action, staff is beginning presentations or presentations are underway at the community planning advisory councils related to SB nine. We have, we are going to be briefing all fourteen CPACs as well as doing an informational session at your next planning commission meeting on one twenty-four. And at that meeting on one twenty-four, I can provide an update as to the type of reaction that we're getting from the CPAC members and the public and kind of provide an update on any applications that have been received that will be processed consistent with SB nine. As it relates to the one twenty-four hearing, we have a couple of items that are lining up for that hearing. One of those items I'll mention to you is the Mosaic Law Event Center. That was a project that was pretty controversial at the CPAC. There are a number of people that are interested in that item that that live in and around that event center. And so we have provided early notification to members of the public about that item. So you may begin hearing from some of those members of the public, given that we've already provided notice. And then lastly, just wanted to mention that on one twenty-five, we will be doing a workshop at the board hearing related to alcohol. It was requested by board members in relation to a alcohol permit being requested through a public convenience or necessity letter, and they requested a workshop to talk in general about the regulatory framework for alcohol sales. Once that package is 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 made available to the public, I will provide a link to planning commissioners. I suspect that the results of that workshop may may initiate some additional code changes, and so I want to make sure that the planning commission is is updated on what may be worked on as a result of that workshop. So that was the, that concludes the items that I was going to present to you and turn it over to our planning director.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks very much. I did want to let the planning commissioners know that after thirty-three and a half years with the county, I am retiring from service, so my last day with the county is going to be January twenty-first. I wanted to say it's such a pleasure to work with the planning commission. This has been a great commission. I know I know some of you more than some of the others, the the remote, as Chair Raythal, you indicated, it's a mixed blessing. It certainly reduces the commute time, but it also makes it much so much more difficult to sort of get to know people in a remote environment. So so I'm sad I didn't get to interact with everybody more in person. But I just wanted to say it's been a pleasure to work with all the past commissions and this commission as well. I know that I leave you in excellent hands. Chris is the person you see the most, and he's amazing. And then, you know, the other team members, Todd and Wendy and Joel, who work directly for me are just a great team, and so I know I leave and things will be handled perfectly fine, so no one will miss a beat, but I did want to let you know that, so thank you.
Congratulations, Leanne.
Yeah, definitely. This is Cara. Just wanted to thank you for your hard work, not only for the county, but all your work with the Planning Directors Association as well. You are a really valuable asset to them and a good leader of that group, and I hope you'll still participate as your expertise is really needed. But congratulations.
Congratulations, Leanne, Ms. Moffett. I really appreciate having worked with you and wishing you the best on your next endeavors, and please enjoy it for the rest of us. Really excited for you in this new chapter, and we wish you the best, and hopefully we can still keep in touch. Thank you so much.
This is Genevieve. Congratulations, Leanne. Thank you, Genevieve.
Congratulations, Leanne. It's been great to work with you for many years, so well-deserved and well-earned, and it'll be really, really fun to see your next adventure, but we'll miss you here at the county and the planning commission, but thank you very much for all of your service here.
Thanks, Peter.
And if you're missing us, feel free to log on, comment on projects, you know, give us a ring anytime. We always appreciate your activities.
It's hard to, it's going to be hard to turn off after thirty-three and a half years, but yeah, all good.
All right, with that, we'll move on to miscellaneous scheduling items.
I don't believe that there's anything else to report here.
All right, and then do we have any final public comments this evening?
No, there are no further public comments.
All right, with that, thank you all for being here this evening. We're going to go ahead and adjourn the planning commission at six twenty-seven PM.